I have the revised copies with me. You will be taking them with you.
Does anybody need a copy?
I think they gave it to us. Yes, I got it.
All right. So what you just received does include the new figures that I got on the spreadsheet. It was about, I don't know, 1 o'clock or so. So I incorporated them quickly into what you have copies of. And it's changed up a little bit because now I have actuals of the retirement, health life, dental, workers comp, social security, all of these are what came through. So some of them were higher and some of them were lower because the only thing I was able to do was just kind of take what we had and do the best estimate that I could. So these should be pretty accurate.
And Madam Clerk, let me just say that with our HR manager being out and with that being the circumstances, that it's obviously not your responsibility to have those actuals. But the bottom line is that your budget, as far as your personnel, is not greatly increasing. It's just being caught up to the actuals is what the newest version of your budget is.
Right. Thank you for that. So what I had to go by was the actuals that I had that was dated 10/31/24. So the only thing that I could do was like on the deputy salaries, speaking of the deputy salaries, was to take that figure divided by 10, and I knew that was what my per month was, multiply that by 12, and that's what my new rate would have been. If there is an increase in July, and I don't know what that would be, but say if it was 3%, that's a pretty good basic place to start as a projection. That would only be 1.5 for us because we were going to be, we'd be getting it those six months. So that 1.5 was 78.14, so that brought that up to 537.47. And I have a job description that I have changed up. It's a salary adjustment because this employee who's been here for 22 years has taken on a lot more responsibility as being that CAVIS dealer. She's got a dealer, actually a dealer room now over at the government center. We've got a lot of new things that are going on, and by the dealer being, the dealer work being so advantageous for the county, the highest revenue that we have, we wanted to make sure that we were able to comprehend and get a good grasp on the KYELT program that's new. Now, the dealer work is going to be coming through electronically, lien filing and transfers, so I need someone very competent to handle that. So that's why you see the difference between the 528 and the 530 because I've got a salary adjustment that matches the job description that I have prepared for her. And other than that, I had a question earlier about line item 24, that 13,000 that was there last year was there because of the furniture that we had to put in. I'm not really sure why that was, not a building and maintenance, but I was told that I needed to include it in my budget, so that 13,000 was what it required, what was the payment for the desk and everything that went in after the renovation was done downstairs with the new flooring and all. And of course, I don't have that now, and it's because all of our equipment and state provided. We have two biz hubs at this point, one of which is a color copier. They provide all the ink and the cartridges and everything, so we don't have office equipment expenses. So that's why that's zeroed out. And other than that, that's about all I have to explain, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have for me.
All right. I'll open up the floor for the Budget and Finance Committee to ask any questions of the clerk on her budget. Squire Taylor, you're recognized.
I don't have any questions I don't want to thank. Just thank you for taking your time and talking to me about it prior to the meeting, just so I could make sure, wrap my head around all of it. I always appreciate your willingness to talk and look at things with me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Squire Verner, you're good. Any other members of the court? I would just make one note that the promotion for the deputy clerk is a, requires an exception to the one-year rule, and so we'd have to make that in the fiscal court meeting. And if anybody has any questions about that, then by all means, but if not, we'll approve that along with your budget. And just to make it clear that, you know, the one-year rule is that an individual only gets a promotion, a raise, or a cost of living adjustment at one time in one year in order to keep that standard across county government. That was passed in the last budget session. It applies to all offices and agencies of the county, not just the fiscal court. But the way that we are able to do that in circumstances of need, as in the one you presented, is through an exception process, and we'll do that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for the clerk? Seeing none, thank you, Madam Clerk. Good job on your budget.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with us while HR's been dealing with those issues.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheriff, are you ready to present your budget, sir? You turn on your mic, Mr. Sheriff. Thank you.
The total difference in this budget's going to be $65,856.50 from last year's. But I was kind of, we didn't have the retirement numbers, so we went with the higher numbers on that, so that's going to come down a little bit. And with the sheriff's deputies, it's gone up $36,500. Then we've got the security, it's gone up $7,000. We've got the clerk's salary, it's gone up $4,900. The incentive's gone up $1,200. The social security, we put down $4,100. The health, we went with, it went down $30,000. Or the retirement went down $30,000, not the health. The health went up 14.6, and the workers' comp went up $32,000. And everything else is the same.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. I would say that I'm well aware of the retention issues that you have with the deputies, and we have a really great team, y'all do, and we want to make sure to keep pace, and so...
We're trying, I mean, we're trying not to lose anybody.
Well, and it's tough in this environment, and so I'm in full support. Hope that the committee and the court will be as well for your modest increases, but they're based on the effort of retention.
Yes.
Which is what we want to do, we want to keep the best. So I'd open up the floor for any questions to the sheriff about his budget. Squire Taylor.
I just want to, again, thank you as well for speaking with me and for going over this. Always appreciate your time and willingness to be available.
Thank you.
Other questions? And the same applies to, I believe it's four deputies that will get an increase. They received the COLA, and so they would be, needed to be exempted by the one-year rule, which we can do that within the passage of your budget.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for the sheriff regarding his budget? Seeing none, thank you all.
Thank you all.
And we will have those budgets on the new items in court. If anybody has any questions between now and then with the sheriff or county clerk, I'm sure they would avail themselves to you for saying. Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Since we have a few moments here before we continue to get rolling, I would just, Madam Treasurer, do you want to go ahead and provide your report in this committee meeting so that we can move it along?
The financial report?
Yeah. It's good for the budget and finance.
Do you want me to give the, report on the ARPA money?
Yeah, that'd be great as well.
Just hold it. Tonight's balance is $16,588,582.23. And then I think you all got the ARPA numbers, but I just wanted to go over those again. We have $3,185,729.99 available. Those are from the ARPA funds that we actually received. And then we have another $297,252.57 that we've earned in interest, so that's money that we can keep. And let's see, it seemed like I had something else. Oh, I will probably need to be doing an email vote around the 26th or 27th for quarter-end transfers. I want to wait as long as I can before we actually calculate those numbers so we can be as accurate as possible, but I have to have those transfers made before the end of a quarter, so I just wanted to give you all a heads up about that. And that's it. That's all I have.
And so if it's good with the committee, well, I'll just read the balance for the treasurer when it's your report time, so you don't have to come up with a report again. The ARPA monies, one of the reasons this is timely is because the federal reporting is due December 31st. This is also the first deadline of the funds. It's the very last deadline to commit the funds. We've committed all of our monies, and we will actually solidify that commitment in the all-points broadband contract. There'll be a finalization of that commitment on the broadband monies. And it's also important to know where we are in those ARPA expenses. We've done a good job in managing those and earning some interest off those, which can go into our general fund through the processes of the SRLP, so...
I also wanted to let everyone know that our online portal is up and running, and we've been receiving a few payments through that, so it's, we've got all the kinks worked out, everything seems to be working good, and so we've gotten a good response from the ones that have used it so far.
And that's great, Madam Treasurer. That she's talking about our one-stop business shop, where you can go and register your business for both the city and county. You can pay fees, you can do other things. First of its kind, only county in the state to be doing that through the League of Cities with cities. And we'll probably do some sort of rollout of that, probably beginning of the year, so that we can make sure folks know about it. So I would open up the floor for any questions of the treasurer from the committee or members of the court regarding her financial report, ARPA monies, any other item. Seeing none, thank you, Madam Clerk. We need to have all our meetings on December 10th, apparently. We've got about 15 minutes to the hour, and we've got some really special guests with us. So we will adjourn this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee, and we will get ready for our special recognition. Thank you, members of the committee.
Yeah, there we go. A leader, natural born leader. All right, Sage, I want you to hit this three times on this. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I bring this court to order. We bring this court to order. Sage, if you could, hit the gavel for me there a couple of times. Thank you, Sage. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, welcome. We have a special recognition this evening for some special athletes in Woodford County. Tonight, we honor the third and fourth grade youth Woodford football runners-up and the fifth and sixth grade conference champions. You all have got this place warm in here tonight, but if you look on the wall, we have a special banner that says, "Woodford County, Home of Champions." And we recognize the best of the best, and tonight, you gentlemen are part of that great history of the best of the best. So, and gentle lady, excuse me. So, the 2024 youth football team showcased unwavering dedication, tireless effort, and unyielding commitment to excellence this season. It was one for the history books, filled with thrilling victories and displays of pure grit. From the first kickoff to the final whistle of the championship game, these young champions gave everything they had on behalf of their family and our community. Their ability to rise to every challenge, execute under pressure, be disciplined and listen to their parents and coaches, and play as one team, one unit, has brought great pride and distinction upon each of you individually, upon your team, and upon Woodford County. So today, we honor the Woodford County Youth Football Team, whose members include, if you could raise your hands, Colton Alcorn, Griffin Allen, Micah Ball, Jack Bazelli, Amarius Dale, Micah Drake, Julius Hughes, Sage Jones, Braden Lyons, Liam O'Real, Alex Fiery, Benji Rayburn, Dax Sedd, Walker Shelters, Zachary Snow, Sam Terry, Chase Washington, Silas Wismer, Phoenix Ballard, Oliver Basanta, Braxton Bourne, Davis Bowers, Michael Brown, Ben Castle, Finn Castle, Brooks Cropper, Benjamin Hall, Weston Hart, Harrison Huber, Cooper Hunter, Adarius Lane, Elijah Meadows, DeShawn Mitchell Cook, Henry Morton, Raylan Robbins, Jaden Rodriguez, Henry Venus, Drayton White, Hunter Alcorn, Colt Barron, Stellan Breeding, Houston Edenstrom, JD Eddington, Keen Ford, Carter Hager, Trace Hannah, Easton Hatcher, Noah Hearn, James Hill, Riley Jacobs, Nathaniel Lane, Hank Lundergan, Jax Rankin, Robert Rodriguez, Wyatt Shelters, Emmett Strahan, Alex Baldwin, Landon Baldwin, Carter Blackburn, Chandler Blackburn, Kayden Branham, Angel Bro, James Escaloni, Brody Fazio, Jacoby Goslin, Owen Gordon, Hunter Hodge, Hudson Huber, Tripp Lawson, Kaimian Mitchell, Nolan Osborne, Jamar Perez, Owen Potter, Samuel Redco, Amarian Reed, Davis Steakland, John Louis Varner, Kayson Waters, and Jace Wintec. Give it up for the champions, you guys. We want to make sure that folks know a special recognition for our conference standouts. In the third and fourth grade, or in the third grade, we had Walker Shelters, Griffin Allen, and Sam Terry. In the fourth grade, Adarius Lane, Harrison Huber, and DeShawn Mitchell Cook. In the fifth... You told him. You told him. That's right. In the fifth and sixth grade, Amarian Reed, Tripp Lawson, Owen Gordon, Hunter Hodge, Jacoby Goslin, and Carter Blackburn. And I want to make a special recognition of our coaches. In the third grade, we have Coach Elijah Jones, the head coach. Where's Coach at? John Ball, Clark Kissick, Jordan Lyons, TJ Shelters, Tom Mangus, and Scott Sedd for the third and fourth grade. Want to give a big shout out and thank you to the president of Woodford County Youth Football, Mike Kissick. We've worked a lot with Mike and helped improve the stadium and support football in Woodford County. And our coaches, head coach Casey Hacker, the fifth and sixth grade, Robert, or excuse me, head coach Rob Hodge. I was foreshadowing. I want to give a big shout out to Rob. Rob has poured his heart and soul into his own kids and many kids in our community, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's football, and the result is championships, Rob. We're glad that you came here. We'll take Princeton transplants like you all any day of the week, yeah. Casey Hatcher, Robert Lawson, Jonathan Hart, Nick Osborne, TJ Hammond, and Larry Blackburn, who are our head coaches for the, our coaches for the fifth and sixth. So, congratulations to our team. You are the reason that the pipeline in Woodford County is set for a bright future for both middle school and high school football. I'm looking forward to inviting all of you back when y'all win that state title, 5A, here in a few years, right? So ladies and gentlemen, give it up for your champions. And as we do, Coach Jones and Coach Hodge, the floor is yours, if y'all want to address the team, the public, the court, and share a few words on what it was like coaching these great young men and women this season. Coach Jones?
This is a little short. Easy. You know, from a, I've been doing this nine years. This concludes my youth in terms of the youth football. But what I would like to say is that we have been supported by the county, by the city, by the facilities that we have, right? It's very, very convenient to be able to go have our games there, have use of those fields, and it's really provided us the opportunity, you know, for visibility for other kids around the county to come and see and to have one place to go for all of that. So that's been a blessing for us. It's been something that I think has really helped build it, right? You see the number of kids in here, and there's several that couldn't be here tonight. So I would just expand it that much further to say, you know, thank you, and it takes all of us, right? And we've been able to leverage what opportunities we have and then, you know, produce these types of results. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Like I say, this is my first year coaching. It was incredible. All these kids, all these parents, all the people in the community is just great. And I can't wait for next year to continue to build and bring a championship to the third and fourth, and then continue on all the way up until they graduate high school and go on to college or wherever they want to go. So I appreciate everybody in this room and everybody in the community for everything they did this year for us. And as we go forward, I appreciate everything. I said it already, but you know, I can't. Just thank you guys so much.
So without further ado, we'll take the ceremonial group picture. We're going to get everybody lined up. And Kristen, you going to take our picture there? All right. Sage, you hold this up there. Hey, reach down there, grab that one down there. Hey, everybody, I have a quick note. The fifth and sixth grade are back-to-back champions, by the way. They've won two years in a row. Everybody smile. Look at Kristen. If you can't see Kristen, she can't see you. Can I have a belt? Is that the conference championship? Thanks, Coach. Yeah, hold that one up. Congratulations, you guys. Hey, I just want you all to know. We are so proud of you. I know your, I know your parents are so proud of you and for all your hard work and because you've been so good this year, they should get you every single thing you want on your Christmas list, okay? And that's going to be an order. That's going to be an order of this court. You gavel it down right here, Sage. Order of the court. That's official. That's official. Congratulations, you guys.
...